So, and it is 7:02 PM. Let us get started with our special meeting of the Planning Commission. Mr. Gaisel, who's to minutes tonight? Okay, okay, I didn't know if we needed a recording secretary. Great, okay, so, back to what I was saying, start our special meeting of Wednesday, January 25th. We do have two members absent today, so we can seat Tim and Brian. And as you're coming up here, we'll do just a quick roll call. Jason Diebel.
Here.
Tom Fitting.
Here.
Michelle Royce-Williams is here. Tim Leducer.
Here.
Rich Gordon.
Here.
And Brian Baumbeck.
Here.
All right, absent tonight are Kirk Scott and Nicole Davison. And let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I have none.
Anyone else? Okay. And I do not believe we have public delegations, but I'll just, for the record, open up the floor for public delegations, which is a time that anyone from the public can speak to us about matters that are not up for decision or public hearing. Anyone here for that today? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to propose that before we get into the rest of the meeting minutes, we take a look at Agenda Number Nine, Municipal Referrals, and we do have a special guest here today to talk with us about the eight dash twenty-four review for EV chargers in town. Do I need a motion to move that? Can I entertain one?
I'd like to make a motion to move Item Nine earlier in the Agenda.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Fantastic, thank you. All right.
Gary, do you submit it with the Agenda, the plan itself, or the sub?
Uh, we should have it here.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Alex Close, Eastline Town Engineer. I think this might be my first time at a Planning Commission meeting. I'm making my rounds solid commission, so nice to see everyone face to face. I brought an analog copy as a backup, but we should be able to get the plan up on the screen. But the supplemental memo basically just describes how the town, I think all the way back in August, we first approached the Board of Selectmen with an opportunity to get funding through an Eversource grant for electrical vehicle charging stations. We had a couple of different consultants we were looking at that worked closely with Eversource. We ended up at that board meeting getting authorization to submit an application through Kevin for one consultant in particular to help us assemble a application for the Hope Street parking lot, the Methodist Street one-way parking lot there, the Town Hall, and as well as the Flanders School by the Flanders Elementary School near the Athletic Fields. We were looking at a Level Two. There's three levels, there's your house level, Level One, Level Two, and Level Three electric vehicle charging. And for the two parking lots, we were looking at Level Two, which is a single-phase, two forty-volt power, fully charges your vehicle in maybe like eight hours, depending on the specs of your vehicle, for the two parking lots. And a Level Three, which is a three-phase fast charger, which will fully charge your vehicle in like half an hour to an hour for the Town Hall and the school, which could also potentially be used in the future by fleet vehicles. That was discussed, the applications were made, and Eversource has approved the funding up to forty thousand dollars for each site for the two parking lots, and we're on the waitlist for the school and the Town Hall for the Level Three charging. That money went very quickly, but they are gonna open another roundup, and we are already in the queue for that second round of funding. So, I plan to present to the Board a proposal to move forward with the money that we were authorized from Eversource for the two parking lots. I've submitted this to Mr. Maholland as well for the zoning review, because it's in the Architectural Overlay District, and then of course, public improvement to our existing parking facilities, again being Hope Street and the Methodist Street parking lots. Before I get into detail with the plan itself, I want to just pause. I know there's a lot of information, and ask if there are any questions about the process so far.
Floor's open if anybody has any questions?
Okay.
I just wanna, before you get into it, just thank you for doing this. I mean, this is definitely directly mentioned in the Plan of Conservation and Development. This group has talked about it on numerous occasions, specifically at some of these locations, and very happy to see progress in this area.
Awesome, yeah, it is a pretty significant funding opportunity. It'll cover a hundred percent of the installation cost and fifty percent of the charger itself. So, we're talking about like an eighty-five percent granted cost share to the town for these installs, which is why we wanted to move very quickly internally, because we are competing against private companies to get these application packages together. So, we kind of pushed this one through as quick as we can to secure the funding, and now we're bringing it in front of you, now that we know it's a real possibility. So, I did submit this plan, which shows, basically, there's a rendering there of what these parking spaces would look like. We're proposing one charger in each parking lot, and each charger will have two ports, so you can charge two vehicles. But I've also included in the application future proofing, which is an eligible funded opportunity to install conduit sleeves from the meter. Both of these lots will get a new meter to be read specifically for this purpose. And there'll be conduits installed for four more chargers, which means six more vehicles could be charged. I think it's very important that the first chargers that we install be ADA accessible. That does not mean that it's restricted, but it does mean that people that would fall into the criteria and the guidelines for ADA accessibility, like you see in this rendering, with the five-foot stripe spacing, the parking spaces being less than two percent, and eleven-foot width, and a twenty-foot depth, which allows anybody with an alternative mobility device to be able to still charge their vehicle. And the other thing is that the charger, like you see in the rendering, is actually gonna be displaced at ground level instead of being set on top of the curb. So, these two spaces in each lot, so four spaces total, would be accessible. And then, in the future, we could, with those conduits, look at installing standard spaces or accessible spaces. I would anticipate two in each parking lot being plenty for quite some time in terms of an option for people that would need those accommodations. So, if we install that, because of the extra space that the parking spaces would take up, we will be losing two spaces on Hope Street and one space on Methodist Street respectively. The reason we're losing two on Hope is because we were counting and end a one-way end aisle space in the corner, which you can see on the plan in the top left, that Hope Street diagram. In that top-left diagram, bottom-right corner, I've striped out that space. While it could fit a vehicle, I don't really feel like that's appropriate for the maneuvering of that vehicle safely in and out of that parking space. So, I think it's better to just lose that space, and we can discuss, you know, this is kind of separate from parking expansion in the future. I think it's better for now to just stripe that as a no-parking space and lose the two spaces. So, that would be a net loss of two spaces on Hope Street, a net loss of one space on Methodist. But, again, that's in order to make these parking spaces accessible and kind of get in front of that. So, when we go to put the other chargers in, that's not something that we have to, that's something that we can install the standard chargers up on top of the curb moving forward, because those two spaces, until we have, you know, certainly in the very immediate future, that'll be enough parking spaces, I think. The last thing I'll say about this is that this does align with some of the work that the Zoning Commission is doing with the state, new state statutes that involve the ability to have new developments implement electric vehicle chargers, whether those be Level Two or Level Three. I've also spoken with Mr. Maholland about providing accessible spaces there for that, for some of those zoning regulations. And he seems to be very in favor with that, so all the more reason that I think the town should, and the Planning Commission should consider this public improvement, because we're kind of putting our best foot forward there, providing these chargers before we go and expect other businesses around town to provide them as well. Are there any other questions specifically about the plan and the location? Anything else I could answer? Yes?
I have a question. So, why did we go with the Level Two chargers on Hope Street and Methodist? That's a long charge, right?
Yes.
Just curious, why wouldn't we all put the fast chargers in those?
Because of cost. We didn't fully anticipate even getting a second round of funding for the Level Two, and we still are on the waitlist. Talking with the consultant that we've been working with, it was highly unlikely that we were gonna get the Level Three money. So, we figured better to at least install the Level Two now, and then we can go back and put in Level Three infrastructure down the road if this becomes, you know, something that we find is being utilized a lot, or if more Level Three money opens up in the future. It's a significant cost difference between the two.
You put three Level Threes at a dealership, it costs us a lot.
Yeah.
On the topic of cost, do we intend to install the software so that these are not free chargers, and it's also a at least break-even to the town on electricity costs or potentially revenue stream?
That's correct. It's another conversation to be had with the Board, but I can tell you that we can immediately start charging for these. In preliminary discussions, we had looked at probably an at-cost with a slight addition for network and maintenance fees and potential investment for future chargers. But obviously, we're not for profit, so we'd want to keep this charging as accessible to everyone as we can. But that is correct, that we do not have to provide this for free. There's no strings attached, if you will, to this grant money.
Thanks.
The chargers in question are gonna be these juice bar chargers here?
Yes, there were two potential models that we were looking at that are approved. They have to be approved under the Eversource specific list of models. If I'm not mistaken, these juice bar ones are also made here in Connecticut, I believe. And between the two models that we were looking at, just because of the size that they take up, some of the aesthetics, but more the size, the accessibility to the handles, and the reputation with the specific consultant that we're working with, we felt that this was the most appropriate model to put here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do these juice boxes have like cameras on them to prevent vandalism?
So, they do not, and that is one item that has been raised internally in terms of security. There's not funding available for security specifically, but that is something that we have discussed internally. I'd like to open our IT department as well and get their opinion on this. Because of their location being in a public parking lot that we think has a lot of visibility, it's not a significant concern, but that doesn't mean that it's not a concern. And you raise a very good point about potential vandalism. We certainly hope that would not be the case, but we have started the discussion on whether or not we'd want to get some sort of cameras or something there to protect that investment. I think that's a conversation that has to be had as we move forward to the Board of Selectmen, because that would be an added cost outside of the scope of the installation itself.
One more question. With all this infrastructure money that's coming out, are you guys looking at other avenues of, you know, funding to do more of this?
So, yes and no. We are definitely keeping our eyes out to the various funding programs that are coming through the IIJA and other funding sources. But we have not seen another funding source that we could immediately use to fund this project. And particularly because of the low investment cost, we're probably talking fifteen thousand dollars altogether for both lots, not each. We'd like to just get to see these actually installed and start to see if they get used while keeping our eyes out for other potential funding opportunities. The key piece with this grant is that they will not cover fifty percent of the charger. So, of that fifteen thousand that you're seeing, and there's a couple of ancillary site items, like ballards, for example, we are planning to install ballards that they will not cover. So, of that money, we're looking at a little less than like five thousand apiece for each charger, and then another five thousand for networking fees and ballards that the grant will not cover. Other than that, we've contained all of the site work within the scope of that forty thousand dollars that's been approved for each site.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just one more, is this like a universal charger, we'll charge any vehicle?
So, if I'm not mistaken, the way that the onus of charging has been actually put on the manufacturers of these vehicles to provide adapters for their drivers. This is new to everyone, relatively new, I should say. And I know that when I was initially researching that, it was a concern and it was a problem. But I think even over just the past year, with the tremendous amount of different brands and manufacturers providing electric vehicles, they have seen that they need to provide adapters. And I think that at this point, that when you get your vehicle, it has, I think most manufacturers have a similar adapter and similar port, and if the vehicle comes with the ability to charge at multiple charging stations, Tesla might be the only exception to that, but to be honest, I'm not a hundred percent certain. But it didn't seem to be a concern when discussing with the consultant.
And just to bounce off that, Brian, the chargers that we have at our work will charge any vehicle, GM, Hyundai, and Tesla. And I would assume that these would be the same. It's a different, we have a different company, but pretty much the same point factor.
Okay, any other questions about the site plan? Or anything we would need to know to make a decision on our charge today, which is to determine whether or not this is in alignment with the Plan of Conservation and Development? No? Okay.
As Michelle mentioned, it was consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. We discussed, I know we're discussing it at the meetings, and it was part of the energy section as one of the recommendations, as long as it was budgeted, you know, as a grant or some other.
Yeah, if we're ready for, if we don't have any other questions, I think we could just, you know, have our further discussion and have a motion now. I think what you said, Rich, was spot-on. So, I'm in Chapter eleven point eight, Recommendations, and what we have here is "Allow space for electric vehicle charging stations in all municipal buildings and public parking spaces where fit. Consider requiring new and redeveloping commercial developments and lots to install EV charging stations as part of construction." So, to me, that is clear, but I would welcome the opinion of others.
I wonder if the inclusion of the commercial calls into question that it's going to be at Flanders?
Well, that's a municipal-owned building. Right? So, all municipal buildings.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone want to put a motion on the floor?
Yeah, a motion to approve the plan for installing EV chargers at the Hope Street and Methodist Street site, as it is in line with the POCD.
So, are you moving to find it consistent with the POCD? Because I don't think we can approve it.
Yes, motion to find it consistent with the POCD.
And Gary's got an add.
You know, you can actually improve it. The eight-dash-three-A referrals, the zoning commission referrals, those are the ones you find consistent.
Oh, we can approve it?
Here you actually approve.
I'm so sorry. Okay. So, your initial motion was the best one.
My initial motion.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, a motion to approve EV chargers, as stated.
Would anyone like to? Thank you, Tom. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Yeah, sure, and so for anyone else listening as well, so the next step is, we plan to present this information to the Board of Selectmen next week, and we could potentially take action if the Board is comfortable with that, which will bring it to the Board of Finance the following week after that. Or if they have questions or concerns, then it would be a rescheduling of that Board of Selectmen meeting. So, just to kind of keep everyone in the loop, that would be the immediate next steps for this. And then, if we hear back on the waitlist, then I'll be back in front of you again for the Town Hall and the Flanders School, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hopping back to our agenda, and let's pick up at the beginning with reports. Any communications for the group today?
I was just asking about, Rich sent me a communication email regarding the Connecticut Power Association's upcoming workshop. Saying, Rich, earlier, Kevin is looking into sending both planning and zoning commission for this opening up, to the members to take that training to fulfill the new training requirements under the statute, which is required for all commissioners. And they said, UConn, CURE, Center for land use education research, along with the CCOG and OPM, have developed a training calendar, which will list events that commissioners can attend. I'll forward that email on to you, so that you can start taking a look at it. And if you can sign up and register for classes. I don't know if there's going to be TPs with those through UConn. I suspect maybe some of them are by mistake, if not. It's all kind of feeling our way through it. Still, there are specific guidelines that still wasn't constituted training. We had talked to our town attorney about it, and they felt that the Connecticut Power Association's workshop would be sufficient to fill that training, at least for the internal control, if I clarify. That's all I had. As you know, I can mention that things Jen did last day after twenty-one years, service from Town Eastline, so it was here very well. We'll be moving on to the South Beach County Council of Governments. I'll sign up for that, so I'll be starting there next week. That's all I have to report at this time.
Excellent, thank you. I am not sure that we have a 2023 zoning representative calendar, so if we could make a note to get that on the agenda or in the materials for next time. I don't, if anyone attended, let me know. I did watch the last meeting on YouTube. Any, or?
We probably should have decided now who's gonna attend the next zoning meeting, and then in the next package we can finish the year up.
Fantastic. Let's check out the calendar. Someone here might know when the next zoning meeting is, and they'd be invited to speak up if they do. Do I have to fact-check that? Or you're sure?
Sunday.
Oh, it's Sunday. Okay. We've got it here.
We have, but right now there is nothing slated that I know.
February 2nd.
There it is.
Is anyone available on the 2nd? I'd be happy to take the 16th, but I cannot do the 2nd.
I can do the 2nd.
Okay. Great, I'm gonna make a note of that. And we will stay tuned for potential cancellation per Terry's report.
Yeah, I mean, they're busy as you know what, but it's just a matter of, you know, minutes aligning. Should be meetings aligning.
Got it. Okay. Anything else on zoning? Okay. Mr. Weber? I think we missed you at the last meeting.
Yes, I.
Glad you're here.
I watched it from home, but I'm watching this, because I got in town late. We had a presentation from the Eastline Sustainability Connecticut group. They took it down and up and made it where they were. They achieved bronze this year, so that's very good. We reviewed the ethic policy. There's gonna be a new endorsement form that all town employees and all commission members are gonna be asked to sign, saying that you've reviewed the ethics policy and you understand it. We discussed the EV charging stations, and we'll talk about that again. We've been discussing the Dominion building. The Yeltsorat Committee and the Main Street Group are looking at options for that. Steve Grant was, Kevin was given authority to enter into a Steve Grant for the transfer station. They're gonna put in a new scale and a new building there. Discussion about merging Park and Rec with Youth Services, that's still being debated, but that's something that they're gonna act on forward. Kevin Genier also has a hazardous mitigation report that he presented. They come through every couple of years when we talk about that. And then we've been knowing, talking about budgets, scheduling budgets and such.
Thank you. I know that scale came before this commission a while back, and I think everyone was excited about the plan, so that's good, that's going forward. I know. I think we were also excited about the bathroom for the person who works there. Yeah. Okay, Mr. Gaisel?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Nothing specific from Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Subcommittee. However, in my chair report, I do have something that's loosely related, as I just wanted to draw the commission's attention. At our last meeting, we talked about a memo that I had received from Penny Heller and her work through Sustainable Connecticut to, she was working with the Town Water Department to collect some data on sodium levels in the town's water supply and evaluating levels at different wells, and then levels in the finished drinking water delivered to customers. I think we talked in this group previously about those levels currently being over the health advisory, but not over federal and state drinking water standards. And her report indicated that the levels are on the rise at some of the wells. This story was covered tonight by WTNH, so if anyone wants to check that out, that's there. We do directly address this in the Plan of Conservation and Development. That's why I'm pointing it out to this group. And we have some recommendations in there about ways to reduce road salt, which is typically, and it seems from this report, the suspected culprit of the sodium- the suspected culprit of the sodium content of the water. So if anyone wants to take a look at that, and, um, just drawing our attention to it as something that touches something this committee discusses. And then I wanted to also thank Tim for attending the regional planning meeting, uh, this week, and hopefully you could give us an update on that.
Yeah, yeah, I got a lot, I've learned a lot, uh, about what's going on in other towns. So as I was saying earlier, there was no quorum for the meeting. There was ten towns in attendance, there's a lot more, yeah, there wasn't a lot of people.
Twenty-two, I believe.
Twenty-two, I think you said, that's why there's an eleven in the quorum that's needed. Uh, so we did all discuss what was going on in town, I, I did a report of what we had going on, thank you Gary for getting me the list. There was a common theme between the towns, um, in issues they were dealing with, a lot of them were dealing with short-term rental regulations, uh, of course cannabis sales and regulations of that, um, the affordable housing plans and seeking more affordable housing to adhere to the 10%. Data center development, um, so a lot of towns were dealing with that, um, because it was a big burden on utilities, um, and there's noise issues with that, um, as well as accessory dwelling unit, um, opting in or out. If you want, I can go through each town, sure?
I would love to know who opted in and who opted out.
Not everybody discussed, but I can, I can tell you, so Groton Town, um, zoning issues regarding a potential data center there, um, they were working on regulations for short-term rentals and cannabis, um, kind of similar to us, they've been quiet lately. They've had some plans to convert hotels into small apartments to get more affordable housing, and their P O C, P O C D talks are underway regarding an update, they just held a meeting yesterday. New London, uh, they were, they found a developer for Fort Tremble, uh, property, I guess for residential units. There are two hundred-plus units going in in Dean Street, um, in February, they have over seven hundred people on a waiting list for those two hundred, uh, apartments.
Wow.
They found a new developer for the Bayonet Street, um, property there, there's going to be some housing for physically challenged individuals. New London opted out of ADUs, they have their own regulations, I guess they're, um, they're dealing with zoning issues regarding short-term rentals as well, um, I guess they lost a litigation against the, uh, with the New London School Board, or the New London Schools. I, I, my notes were kind of, I was just writing them as I was going, so some of this stuff is vague. Basra, they're possibly develop, putting in a data center, uh, they have the utilities, but some people are upset about potential noise. In Salem, uh, they approved their P O C D for, they've, they've been working on for the last two years, in house, uh, they've got thirty-one percent projected open space, forty-eight percent of P A four ninety space, I had to look that up. They have a pending lawsuit going on with the short-term rental property, and this is, I find this funny, because they've got a seventeen thousand square foot property with thirty-plus beds in it, that they're dealing with. And they have a twenty-four unit apartment complex coming soon. Town of Franklin, they've had a busy fall, they have also opted out of ADUs, they have a moratorium on the cannabis sales, similar to what we have in place, uh, they've got an application filed for a propane distribution center, uh, they're also working on their P O C D, it is due in June. The city of Groton, it's been quiet for them as well, uh, they're dealing with a ongoing development for electric vote, they've also got short-term rental property issues, um, they have come up with an agreement with the Groton Estates for an easement, uh, and they're seeking training for their commission members, I think, like we are and everyone else is going to be soon. Town of Stonington, uh, they've got their cannabis regulations in place, they've adopted their affordable housing plan, that's the one that we kind of were bouncing off of. Planning and zoning regulations have not been updated in a very long time, like decades, so they're working on updating it with a consultant. They also have a public park going in north of Old Mystic Village, which will have a rowing facility, et cetera. I missed a bunch of that, I apologize, but that looks like it's going to be a pretty nice little park.
Rowing facility?
Yeah, like rowing.
Machines?
No, like rowing in, in the water, true.
Oh, I see, true.
Yeah. Uh, North Stonington, they're dealing with, uh, staff members that stepped down, I guess, they have CCOG staffing, um, planning and zoning, and they have an affordable housing application coming up. Waterford has a new planning director who was just hired in December, John Miller, he was present.
Mullin.
Mueller, I'm sorry.
Mullin.
Mullin, he was present and he reported. Uh, they're still looking for a developer to redevelop the Crystal Mall, it's been a ongoing thing for them. Uh, they're looking to develop the airport property, uh, with affordable housing, they have forty-seven plus mobile home units going in as well. I think if we looked at one of those charts, they had a lot of mobile homes already. Uh, their affordable housing plan was adopted in May, they have banned cannabis sale in the, in the town of Waterford, um, and that is it for the town. CCOG had a nice little presentation, um, regarding their, their plan of conservation development and their open space goal of twenty-one percent. Uh, they're going to be creating an open space data hub, an inventory of open space, and municipal toolkits and action plans to help. They're also planning on enhancing and connecting certain greenways in the area, because there's a lot of greenways trails that aren't connected, they're like fragmented all over the place, is actually a pretty neat little map they had, um, they're coming up with a stormwater utility to help find, uh, funding for stormwater management better, and for hazard mitigation, um, and FEMA pre-disaster mitigation, and that is all I have.
That was a great update, thank you.
If anyone wants copy, I have.
Appreciate you attending.
No problem.
Okay, uh, moving on to approval of the minutes, so we have a set of minutes in front of us for the special meeting, uh, special meeting minutes of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Despite me butchering that agenda item, would anyone like to put a motion on the floor about those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone like to second Jason's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion carries. We do not have any public hearings tonight, uh, we do have one pending subdivision, and, um, uh, this one is through Attorney Garrity, who cannot be with us tonight, so I'm going to ask Gary to fill us in on, uh, a couple of the status items of this application. Are you looking for the memo?
Yeah.
We have it in our email. And I think, um...
I have, well, not even my memo, um...
The report?
Attorney Garrity's letter.
Oh.
So we've, uh, start with, uh, Attorney Garrity sent the correspondence, the date is January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, uh, to myself, requesting a hearing scheduled for January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, to continue to the next regular scheduled meeting, the Planning Commission, I tested positive for COVID nineteen this morning, and am, am, by the CDC guidelines, warranty, therefore I will not be able to attend in person, so, Gary, of our C C, Kristen T. Clark, E. I will note that, uh... It's in the email, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. I have it Monday at three twenty-nine P M.
So, um, we have pretty of a on the screen, it's, uh, my memo, uh, regarding my review of these applications. Number one, as indicated in the letter from Don Lewish, President of Eastline Land Trust, uh, the application did request two waivers, the first being a waiver of the stormwater management requirements as identified in section six dash eight dash seven, and a waiver of the preliminary resource impact and conservation plan identified in section five dash two dash two B, and C of the Eastline subdivision regulations. The design report also indicated that property had never been subdivided accordingly, no public hearing required, um, but according to our regulation pursuant to section four dash thirteen, waivers of the Eastline break, subdivision regulations only, specifically authorized within the regulation, may the commission waive certain requirements by three-quarters of vote. And again, they have to demonstrate a, a strict compliance with the, the regulation that caused exceptional difficulty or hardship, um, and that being said, the commission also has to hold a public hearing. Um, in discussing the plan with the town engineer, uh, his primary concern was that they demonstrate adequate sightline from the proposed driveways. There were no other public improvements that were proposed, and therefore he had no further comment in regards to the stormwater, um, he, again, had no significant concerns, the acreage is fairly large, uh, however, the waiver does require public hearing and I did have some issues in, uh, I thought there were some significant deficiencies with the plants themselves. Plan sheet one, the location cover sheet was revised and submitted by hand delivery on January third, twenty-three, again, by email on the January fourth. It was revised to include a zoning compliance chart, but the date of the revision block is not updated. Plan sheet three of three shows a parcel of land now a former quartzite holdings, and the configuration like flag or rear lot, but they could be put access strip of flag pole. However, the proposed lot line modification, which is on my desk, being reviewed by my office, uh, which I approved, a plan entitled, uh, a plan showing a dummy line adjustment and partial swap of property Hathaway Farms LLC and Stephen W. Hathaway, Hathaway Road and Scott Road, Eastline Connecticut Scale one equals two hundred, dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. That plan does not depict a flag lot, rather it depicts a land lot parcel with a twenty-five foot easement to Heritage Road. Those mylaws have not yet been executed by myself or recorded on the Eastline land records, and which currently filed on the Eastline land records and draw a hate page to seven hours, and now the title of the plan showing the first cut, resplit, property to Hathaway Farms LLC, Hathaway Road, Scott Road, and Heritage Road, Eastline Connecticut Scale one equals two hundred, dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, prepared by John Paul Marine, Manseverre Marine, one ninety-one Boston Road, the plan depicted approximately a three point four acre parcel with a fifty foot wide strip of land or flag pole versus an easement. So my question here is, if they file mylaws, uh, that are before my desk, on my desk, would that supersede what's filed, and would the fifty foot strip revert back to a twenty-five foot easement? And they note that the, I'm, I'm noting the parcel that it transferred to is the hundred fifteen point four three acre parcel, um, as opposed to the three point four four acre parcel. Let's see. And again, number five, kind of backside, on the backside of that, which is being that the mylaws for lot line modifications noted above, were not filed, the proposed subdivision plan in my opinion is an accurate reflect the current lot configuration, as the parcel now a fully Stephen Hathaway, would not be the configuration it is shown until such time the mylaws for lot line modification noted before above were filed. That said, number six, I'm sorry I'm reading this almost forbidden, but I think it's important that we set the stage here for efficiency, uh, the lot line modification noted above proposes to evenly swap five point nine three acres of land to be configured from Stephen Hathaway to Hathaway Farms LLC, and five point nine three acres from Hathaway Farms to Stephen Hathaway. No seen issue with that. Uh, in addition, there's approximately three point four four acres of land, fronting on Hathaway Road identified as reserve area two, on previous iterations of the proposed lot line modification plan, um, which clearly could not have been approved because it did actually propose a subdivision, so they've since modified that plan, uh, but they still showed this reserve area two, um, unfortunately, on the plan that I approved, the notes fell off that plan and is no longer labeled as reserve area two. So on the approved plan, I, I date that here, uh, so it's not identified in any way, sheet three and three, it depicts a twenty-five foot driveway easement over the hundred and twenty-one point three three acre parcels. So I believe the hundred fifteen acre parcels we're referring to here, the date, they're pulling out the six acre subdivision, it's before you, and it brings the acres down to one fifteen. And then there's this reserve area three, that's bringing approximately three point two acres in the previous iterations, but again, it's not identified on the approved plan, uh, the plan that I approved, um, which said mylaws have not yet been executed by myself or chaired or filed. So according to the design report, the proposed hundred fifteen point four three acre parcel that being preserved is open space by the Eastline Land Trust, however, this is not noted or depicted on the proposed plan, nor does the proposed hundred fifteen point four three acre parcel show a proposed home or suitable septic area. This parcel along with the three point four four acre parcel in reserve area two and reserve area three, which is now a five point nine three acre parcel, need to be identified as other building lots which meet Eastline subdivision regulations for open space. One of the other, uh, in addition, the assessor's map depicts the three point four four acre parcel labeled as reserve area two being part of the original tract, is being depicted as a separate lot. As such, clarification as to the creation of this lot along with the chain of title to the original tract of the hundred twenty-two point one four acres is needed, uh, further, there's a PDF of the revised cover page for the Hathaway one phase one, uh, which was submitted, going change again with the zoning chart, the chart was not updated, uh, as such, I felt an A two acre survey map showing existing property boundaries and new proposed boundaries are needed, um, and I'm kind of the opinion that the proposed lot line modification, similar to, uh, another application, again, which Attorney Gary represented the applicant, I deny, if you recall, and, uh, we were corrected by Attorney Gary, which again, uh, I, I don't state that our regulations didn't specifically give you that authorization, I and the commission had to. As such, it's my professional opinion that I'm going to defer the lot line modification to the Planning Commission for review and approval, um, I've not executed those, those mylaws, and, and I don't, I'm not certain in the game that I issued approval for a plan, but again, that plan is not accurately reflected in the mylaws that I have, so, at least, I'm a little confused, so I think this commission maybe is wrong. Again, the proposed subdivision plan depicts a three lot subdivision, six point seven two acres of land, which is three point six eight acres, proposed open space, however, the total acres of the parcel being subdivided is either a hundred and twenty-two or a hundred and fifteen, um, while the exact acres are not clear, there would be a total of four building lots, lot one, point nine five acres, lot two, point nine, I believe that should be nine, point nine five acres, uh, lot three, point three three acres, and the remaining land, lot four, a hundred fifteen point four three acres. So into section ten of the Eastline subdivision regulations, open space must be either ten percent for conventional subdivision, thirty percent for change of subdivision design developments, and we provide those figures for you, and so we'd be looking at either ten percent of a hundred and fifteen, um, eleven and a half acres, and or possibly up to the C D, thirty-four. acres, and or possibly up to the C D, thirty-four. Finally, with a hundred twenty-two point one four acre parcel, always separate piece from, a separate piece from the land previously subdivided, is known as the Hathaway subdivision across an upper high density road and Hathaway roads. I don't know. I suspect at one time it all was, it may have been carved out prior to the enactment of subdivision regulations, and thus, it is its own tract and has never been subdivided. Again, without a change of title, I, the deeds, I don't, don't know. Something more pretty new and minor, but the proposed plans were prepared at a scale of one inch equals forty foot. Section five dash two of the regs require the plans to be at a scale of one inch equals forty feet. And again, I pointed out, section five dash two dash two A, it's like contact map, which I'll just submitted, gives some clarification and direction. I believe the maps that they provided, they did provide a locus map at the right scale, but hopefully this will provide a little more clarity as to location and resources around them.
Yeah.
That said, I think if I go back to my comment regarding the request for waivers and the need for a public hearing. And if in case, if that be the fact that this application does require a public hearing pursuant to that, as a request in the waiver, I would argue in a point two, I think. A handout that I handed you, there's some highlighted here. What's needed would require.
Gary, I think that we've all got, oh, you have it, okay.
Well, I had the pages separate, I guess. Saved them, I had my.
No, I got it.
The overall document, I can bring that page to you.
Page thirty-nine, if that helps.
So I'll start with item B, the date of receipt. Within the record, we do have a letter from Mr. Gary. Date of January ninth, twenty twenty-three, and it follows, Dear Gary, as you are aware of my client, Kristen Clark P E, submitted a subdivision application on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two for land located on Scott Road that is currently owned by the Eastline Land Trust. Accordingly, since the next regular scheduled meeting of the planning commission is later on that, the evening of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the application was deemed accepted as of this date despite said meeting cancellation and the sixty-five day time approval window began to run per chapter one twenty-four, section seven D of the Connecticut general statutes. Since this is the first subdivision of this property, no public hearing is required. Speaking to my client this past week, I was made aware of the fact that we have not yet received any staff comments on the plans submitted. I would appreciate your assistance in giving to us any staff comments as soon as possible so we can address any issues prior to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the planning commission. Again, the seventeen, the meeting on the seventeenth was canceled and the holding of the meeting this evening. So in response to that, I was again, go back to the request for waivers, the need of a public hearing, the letters incorrect. Then in regards to the date of receipt, I believe he's mistaken here, and maybe, I'm not an attorney, but I think the language here is pretty clear. Most of it, I can just read this quickly. Again, I highlighting the question here, if the proper actions are taken with a lot of time, is only the subdivision application, you know, can be approved by operation of law, that's important. So you'll see under the official date of receipt, it is not the day the application or petition is actually submitted or filed. Rather, it is later, it is a later date that is specifically defined by the statute. If relevant statutes do not define the quote date of receipt, end quote, it should be presumed to be the actual day of filing or submission. Connecticut Supreme Court has distinguished between laws requiring a decision to be made at a certain number of days after the actual submission of application and laws requiring decisions to be made after statute or prescribed date of receipt. So I'll point to, and you have attached appendix A, and for approval of subdivision plans not included in subdivision plan, so they say it's not included in subdivision plan. Deadline to hold a public hearing is not required, must be determined within sixty-five days. But in this case, I believe a public hearing is required and a D is needed. And you'll see with the approval of reset subdivision plan, we have, we have to hold a public hearing within sixty-five days after the date of receipt. So if you flip appendix A over, page one twenty-seven, you'll get item number five. The date of receipt is deemed to be the earlier of one, the day of the next regular scheduled meeting of the commission after the day the application is submitted, or two, thirty-five days after the application is submitted. So being that we didn't hold a meeting or meet within that thirty-five days, my complete date of receipt is January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. That's my opinion, where I did track, which one to know, on that schedule. We will have to hold a public hearing by March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Three.
I'm sorry, sorry, twenty-three, thank you. However, the said fee for a public, said public hearing will not yet have been paid. And that's where I get into the next item here on completeness of application. And there's a few areas that are highlighted. So subdivision application is supposed to demonstrate that passive solar energy can be tendered considering during planning process. I didn't see that necessarily addressed, maybe someone else did, but I didn't see it in any of the materials. So that's one thing that's also missing. And then, how much highlight here, what attorney Disco pointed out, was that common problem arises when an application either is not in the proper form or does not contain all the information required under the applicable statutes or regulations. Many commissions in this situation will quote deem the application incomplete and refuse to give it further consideration. That approach is probably safe if the proper application form or the required fees have not been submitted. However, if the application merely lacks certain information, it is risky to refuse to accept it. Court may deem submission of either incomplete application as an event that fixes the quote date of receipt, requiring the commission to render some decision within specified time. Commission acts in the proper time, effective application may be automatically, quote approved, end quote, by operation of law. So to avoid such unfortunate results, the offer here recommends that when the commission receives an application, it needs to be incomplete, it should assume that the timetable for rendering a decision has started anyway, if the applicant failed to provide the necessary additional information before the time for decision runs out, the commission should deny the application on the grounds that the information provided does not satisfy the standards in the relevant regulations or statutes. When a denial is based on incomplete information, however, the commission should apply the applicant to resubmit the application. Such a denial is often referred to as a denial without prejudice. I did highlight a little bit there about pinhead wetlands, although there were wetlands on the hundred and twenty-two acre site. The wetland agency did review the subdivision plan and determined that to cut the six acres out, no wetland work was required to be over three hundred feet. So with that, it's my opinion that the application is inefficient and significantly incomplete, and also requires a public hearing and no review of the plan. So if we assume January seventeenth was the date of receipt, I would say that we have sixty-five days to render a decision based on what they submitted, and I can do that calculation quickly.
Well, let's, while you're doing that calculation, let's have a bit of Q and A. I have a couple things and then I'll open it up, okay? The memo that you provided to us that you read through on the record, that is dated August fifth, is that a typo? I just want to make sure we note it if it is, because that's way ahead of the dates we're talking about. Earlier, it's earlier than now, I mean, August fifth. We're saying that the application was received in December-ish with the receipt, the date of receipt as legally defined.
That, that August date is.
Okay, great, great.
I literally wrote that on.
Okay, I had a feeling, I just wanted to make sure. So let's just make sure it's clear in the record that the correct date for this is January twenty-third. And that is reflected in the email that Jen sent over. So I guess I have thoughts that could maybe guide our Q and A, if you'll entertain me with that. It looks like we have quite a bit in front of us in terms of both some questions and requirements on the timeline, but also some big questions and holes in the application, not the least of which would be kind of that we've got these two property maps out there that don't necessarily jive with each other. So my initial feeling would be to move that the application is incomplete and you know, allow a start from scratch if, if the developer chooses to do so, if the applicant chooses to do so. But I'd love to allow others to have questions and feedback on that.
In regards to the incorrect scale that they filed it in, is that something that could be used as a potential to deny it?
As well, yeah, I don't think it's as strong as you need a public hearing, there's no fees to it.
But I mean, the evidence is piling up.
In my opinion, yes, I agree. There, there would, here.
But to answer your initial question, I think that that is in our regulations and you're right, that that alone, yes.
So if we deem it incomplete, the date of receipt would start with a new application?
Correct. Other questions while Gary's looking into that?
So quickly, I just, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two is sixty-five days from the seventeenth. So I think we need to render a decision for that, this application is incomplete. That being said, we have a letter from Mr. Gary, who, attorney Gary, who has requested you continue the discussion on this. The commission has discretion to move forward, to choose what they like. Deny the application without prejudice, and they can resubmit, we can wait until the next meeting. What would be interesting here is that they submitted on the thirteenth.
I'm just trying to match up the drawings.
That would be in February sixteenth, would be sixty-five days on the thirteenth.
Right.
So the lawyer, oh, sorry.
So, I mean, that's the timetable he's been using. We meet February seventh, prior to that date.
Go ahead, Tim.
The lawyers, was the, what lawyer said, we should continue this discussion?
He's requested, because he gave out COVID, he was not even coming.
Yeah, so he doesn't, because that was my comment, I was curious about it.
I did send a copy of my memo to the applicant and attorney. I then did not hear a response back. I heard a response, the app was the letter from him requesting that we cancel the discussion. So I'm, either, I mean, we can cancel it if we have time. I believe we have until March twenty-second to decide.
But that's, that's also part of the discrepancy. If the applicant were to successfully argue that we do not have until March twenty-second, we have until essentially a couple days after our next meeting. Right?
Right, but again, I, I, you've been requested to grant waivers of subdivision regulations, you need a public hearing, you have.
Yeah, I agree with you, I'm just setting the table here. Brian, you had a question?
Well, I was just, I was looking through the drawings, the layout drawings, and I was trying to match that up with the design report. I just, I was confused with some of these, you know, this eleven lot. So, you know, eventually they want to make this eleven lot subdivision, and they're going for three up front. Oh, this, this wasn't consistent with the drawings, I was confused. They're showing these, these lots here. Three that we're talking about tonight are these three, I believe. I was confused, this doesn't seem like it's all lining up.
It seems like several of us are having similar concerns. Is anyone willing to put a motion on the floor regarding this application?
Not sure.
Yes, please.
As the information and materials submitted in support of the application are insufficient and lack specific detail to render a decision, I make a motion that the Eastline Planning Commission find the aforementioned applicant, application incomplete and hereby denies the application known as Kristen T. Clark P E for Eastline Land Trust Incorporated for a three lot subdivision and waivers of section six, eight, seven, strong water management, and sections five, two, two, eight, preliminary resource impacted conservation plan of the Eastline subdivision regulations without prejudice.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion needed before we head to a vote?
I would just like to say that I think it's very unfortunate that attorney Garrity has COVID and can't be present, and I, I understand that this is a difficult time, but hopefully he'll be able to help set the application straight in the near future.
Question for you. Yeah, so when you were going back and forth, did they, they send, did you tell them, you know, fix these problems, or?
I, on Monday, they received my, along with this commission.
So you're trying, yeah, you were trying to resolve it, okay.
So at least making aware of the concerns, but I have no response to it, so.
Oh, you responded, uh huh. No, didn't respond, uh huh. So you gave us a good response.
I'm guessing maybe you, well.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Respond, and it just is kind of what it is.
Well, the applicants too, same thing, whether they, did you?
The applicant was on the email, she has the choice to respond to it.
Oh, so she didn't, okay.
I think that we would have most of these questions, whether or not the applicant or her representative was here, because some of them are duplicate map filings that slightly differ and you know, items that don't adhere to specified sections of our regulations, as Tim was pointing out in eight and nine.
Yeah, I agree, it's unfortunate that he's, he's got COVID and unable to speak for himself, but there's just way too many inconsistencies with this, so I wouldn't feel comfortable even table it.
Okay. Let's move to a vote. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor of finding the application incomplete and denying it without prejudice, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Returning to our agenda, we do not have any zoning referrals tonight, and we did already go through our municipal referral, so on to old business, which is a review of our subdivision regulations and making revisions.
So with that, I'm going to request a scheduled, our next regular scheduled meeting, I believe we have time to schedule a public hearing, to address section four of regarding the ERT, at least to delete the section as a whole. It's something that the ERT, if you look at their website now, they will not perform an ERT or subdivision of land that is being proposed to be subdivided, it is something they're not going to do. So the guidance from counsel is that if you have a requirement, you can't require someone to do something that that's impossible to accomplish. That being said, ERT didn't preclude the commission from denying or approving any application. Either way, there was such a requirement of the application to be divided. So that said, most applications do get some sort of in the open view. Now, particularly with the three hundred foot open view area, more land is going to be reasonably looked at, whether or not it's required to be contained. But that said, there's going to be more eyes on the ground.
Okay, so I'll look forward to that at the next meeting. Anything else on?
That's all I have for now, and then there's a number of other changes, but I don't think they're as pressing to change. These, the counsel, those, so we're going to treat that. Being that we, you know, it's been ten years since we adopted the regs in the form that they're in, we're kind of looking at how well they're working. I think I've reported on this previously, that we've got a lot of smaller, one to three lot, five lot subdivisions. Well, we're gaining open space, it's not, I don't know that it's as meaningful as we anticipated. The one subdivision that was meaningful, I think in terms of open space, was off the spring off the road, but that's still held in course. That was a larger tract where we saw a larger subdivision.
Right. Okay, well, thank you. We just have the one item of new business today, which is the request of Theodore A. Harris, ESQ, for Elizabeth Perry owner for a ninety day extension of time to file milars due to delay in calculation of bond amount for the five lot subdivision located west of West Lane, which is Eastline Assessor's map, two point two, lot eleven.
We did determine the bond amount, they have posted that bond. I will note that the request came in prior to the expiration date, although it's a few days. They just, we did have a similar situation prior to this, and we acknowledged the extension request of the bond. That being said, I would say, I know regardless of the location, I would just say, given why we do have housing prices of sorts, and well, it's not affordable, it is housing.
And you're saying that we also have precedent for granting these extensions after the fact?
After the date of expiration, but so long as they come in prior to the expiration date, afterward it's too late.
Right, okay. Would anyone care to make a motion on that item?
Do we have to approve?
We would have to approve the extension.
I submit a motion to prove the ninety day extension to file the milars.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion or questions on that? Okay. All in favor of extending for ninety days the time to file milars, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. Another unanimous vote for this planning commission tonight. We are on the same page. Let's see if we can do it again. Our next item is adjournment.
I'd like to make a motion if we adjourn.
Thank you, Jason. Would anyone like to second? No, Tom fitting is seconding. Let's see if we have a unanimous vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, thank you very much. It is eight eighteen that we're adjourning.